The next item is item number 30, application for certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, docket number 15-3978, block 1385, lot 15, 19 East 70th Street, an individual landmark within the Upper East Side Historic District, an Italian Renaissance-style residence designed by Thornton Charde and built in 1909 to 1910. This is an application to reconstruct the rear facade, construct a rooftop addition, and replace the areaway fencing and alter the entrance.
I'm Francesca, I'm here as preservation staff. The application is to reconstruct the rear facade, construct a rooftop addition, and alter the entrance at 19 East 70th Street, which is an individual landmark, and a forest renovation located on the north side of East 70th Street between Fifth and Madison Avenue in the Upper East Side Historic District. There are three parts to this proposal. First, the reconstruction of the rear facade, removing portions of the facade, including a metal bay window, creating a stepped configuration throughout the facade, and this portion of the building is visible from public fairground. Second portion of the proposal is to construct a roof competition by reconstructing existing bulkheads and penthouse and creating terraces. The final portion of this proposal involves alterations to the entrance and areaway, including a replacement of light fixtures and replacement of the existing three-foot, six-inch non-historic fence with a taller five-foot fence, matching the non-historic design of the fence, as well as the installation of a five-foot gate at the primary entrance here, and replacing the existing brass storm doors with metal gauge or transom. There is a photo of the historic fence that was previously replaced in the presentation, and this is on page 27 of your handout. Your architect is here to discuss the particular proposal.
My name is Paul Walter, and I'm here to tell you about this project. This building was originally built as a single-family residence, and was then subsequently converted to be the Nodler Art Gallery, which it was for about the past 50 years. When that happened, the building became from residential to commercial use, and I guess when it was built, the laws were a little different in terms of setbacks and light and air requirements on the rear of the facade. The front facade is in very good condition, and our proposed alterations to the front facade are pretty minimal, mostly centering around restoration, and the changes that we're proposing on the upper level of the building cannot be seen from the street. The lower areas here, there's a fairly tall archway, a series of arches. And I'll talk a little bit later about the proposed fence change, going to take you through the big picture concepts of what we want to do. In terms of the rear facade of the building, it is in very poor condition, it's infilled with many different brick patches, there's a lot of deterioration in the metalwork. And then at the lower level here, there was an infilled large-scale window, which was part of the original design. This project was published in 1915 in the Architectural Record as being a significant single-family residential design. Interesting that the rear facade had this very large glazed opening at that second story, which is now completely filled in with concrete block, and there was also a curved skylight at that time, which is interesting, and something we kind of picked up on in the photograph when we came up with the idea of how to solve the problem of making this building comply with light and air requirements for its residential use. One of the other things that we picked up on is in the rear facade, the building right next door to this building, this building here, has a series of stepbacks, and our building here also has a series of stepbacks. So one of the things we came up with, we also surveyed the existing rear yard donut and found that it was quite cacophonous, and there was no real cohesive design integrity to the rear facades of all these buildings, which also gave us a sense that it would be okay to create something that picked up on something that was there, but was actually quite different than what was there. So in terms of the front facade on the left, basically, our project is as is in this drawing, and in the right drawing, it shows the proposed. There's a very tall bulkhead up here, the elevator bulkhead, we're actually lowering that and simplifying the materials and the massing of the upper roof area. We're also proposing at this level here, that what is now two windows flanking a center door be converted to three sets of doors, but one cannot see that from the street, and the upper portion of what we would be proposing would essentially look the same or very similar to what's there, but cannot be seen from the street. And I'll get into it a little later in terms of these minor gate alterations that we're proposing. The rear facade is really where the big work that we're proposing to be done is. I mean, involves removing the entire rear facade and portions of the upper existing terrace, penthouse, which can be seen in this photograph here on the left, and reconstructing the entire back facade. This is where we get into large glazed areas and a series of stepback terraces, which we've implemented in order to meet the light and air requirements for bedrooms on the back of the house. The existing back facade has several different tones of tan brick, and we've determined which of those was the original, and so we're proposing that most of that facade be the tan brick, with a few minor accents of stucco, which would be rendered to look like limestone. And we do have some precast stone copings at various points of the stepback. Again, just cycling back to some of the inspiration for this, you see the stepback facade where there are various terraces. We have the polished glazed opening, which was original, and the horizontal skylight here. This is a 3D view. This facade is visible from Madison Avenue because you have those one- and two-story retail shops between 70th and 70th first, but this is more of a bird's eye view, this is not what would be visible from Madison Avenue. I'm just showing you this drawing to give you a sense of the existing, here's where that large glazing was originally, there was a stepback. It came up one story, there was a stepback, it came up again, and there was a stepback. In our proposal, we're coming up the first two stories having a step, coming up once, having a step, coming up twice, having a step, once a step, once a step, and then finally, at this point, we do get back to the 30-foot minimum requirement where a window could actually be considered a window.
Oh, is that stucco back there, or is that brick masonry?
On the existing, on the proposed, it's a combination of stucco and brick, okay? And that's what, what's on the building is now a combination of stucco and brick, with about two or three different poorly patched brick areas that mismatched brick, and you'll see that when we get to the photographs. Another bird's eye view, one of the features of this building is a beautiful south-facing terrace, which again cannot be seen from the street, but it's directly accessible from one of the levels. What is not accessible really except by a ladder right here, mechanical access ladder, is another roof terrace, which has a fabulous view of Central Park. So part of the work that we're doing, in addition to cleaning up the materials and creating a visual enclosure for mechanical equipment and lowering the elevator bulkhead, is simplifying the massing and adding a stair, which would give one access from the lower exterior terrace to the upper exterior terrace. This is a bird's eye view of the rear facade in the back. You can see how large that roof terrace is now, but by the series of stepbacks that we've implemented, we've actually lost a good bit of square footage, but we're still able to retain a good usable roof terrace, which is a great feature for a house in this These are just existing and proposed floor plans converting from the commercial gallery use to private residential. This drawing is good to look at because none of the proposed changes on the roof can be seen from the street. Here's your sky exposure plane, everything is sort of set back and non-visible. If you follow this line right here, that is where the existing mass of the building fills in, and you can see how we've stepped back and reduced the square footage within that area to affect these terraces, skylights, and light and air changes. On the front facade, there is this low three-foot, six-inch gate, and we're proposing to elevate or replace that gate with a five-foot tall gate, and actually, the details of that gate would be related more to the historic ironwork that had been retained on the windows. We're also proposing to change what we think is non-original metal doors to ironwork that fits in more with the ironwork that is on the existing windows, which is quite beautiful, and we're adding a gate there as well. This is the view from Madison Avenue from a pedestrian point of view, so these low one- and two-story buildings here really do obscure the lower portion of the rear facade, but you do see the upper portion of the stepback facade, which we feel is a nice complement to the front of this building. We were frankly kind of surprised at how nondescript and poorly detailed the rear facade was of this magnificent mansion with its limestone facade. This is a section through the building next door, which shows how the rear side view of our building is fairly more visible, and how after the proposed design, it steps back. These are just the before and after sections. This is a section from the Central Park side, showing the lotline windows and the penthouse on the rear. Getting into the nitty-gritty on the ground floor changes. The building had this Nodler Gallery awning that's been since removed when the gallery left. There was a sign plaque on the building that's been taken off. There's still a little sign on the facade that says 19. These metal doors are here now, and this is the existing ironwork on the main windows. These are the gates which protect people. There's actually a little areaway and a staircase that leads down to a basement entry, and it really is a kind of security problem because we found that bums and people can just go right down there and hang out in that space, and so part of the initiative for changing that is to raise it slightly. A five-foot gate is a much more of a deterrent than a three-foot, six-gate, and yet it's not that tall that it would usurp the proportions of these arches. So here's the existing, here's a proposed, in plan, you can see that there's an entryway, this little areaway. We're proposing that a gate, an ironwork gate, be placed out at that same plane that the existing gates are. This is a detail showing the existing, the proposed on the right, how it picks up on the detailing of the ironwork in the windows. The light fixtures, there were three canopies in each of the vaulted spaces of the archways. We would like to put a light fixture back into each bay, which has a historic sensibility to it. There's a picture of the light fixture. Part of the changes that we're making at the plane of the building involve changing what now is a very tall wooden door, the top of which is arched, and it actually opens. It's a little bit awkward, it's hard to weatherproof something like that, so we're proposing that the top of the doors be, well, the doors would be replaced, the top would be a half-light window, which could be much more thoroughly weatherproofed. We're proposing to add a half-light ironwork that picks up on the ironwork of the existing facade, and then a security gate at that plane in front of new wooden doors. Took some photographs of other buildings in the neighborhood to show some context, there are a lot of buildings with this kind of detail, iron gates laying just outside of wooden doors, top fan lights which are glazed, which have a decorative iron grill top, and they look quite nice.
Okay.
There's just a little detail on that upper section where you have the two windows flanking the doors, now you have three windows, and again, none of that can be seen from the street.
And that's copper, the added issue, the bulkhead?
It's a painted metal. The building has now a variety of different metals, some of it's copper, some of it's been painted over, some of it is sheet metal painted, so we're proposing that the front facade work would be all restored and stay copper, and then whatsoever on the roof that would not be copper would be metal and painted. That is...
Okay.
And why is that? Just curious, why you're adding another, because you're removing most of those metals, right?
We're removing those metals, right.
So why introduce another metal?
Well, there is already painted metal up there.
That you're...
Leaving.
That we're replacing. So what we felt was important is what could be seen from the street should stay copper and keep the patina, but since these other elements on the top of the building are not really visible from the street, and you can achieve a similar, that distance is so great that you can achieve a similar sensibility of ribbed metal or standing seam metal with a painted finish, it seems unnecessary to make those elements copper.
There aren't some, isn't some of that at the rear of the building that you can see from the side?
Right, but all has been painted over. That stuff that, no, this is, this is the rear here, that's all painted over right now, on what's up there right now.
What is that? What's the metal under the paint?
Some of it's copper, some of it's steel.
But you're completely replacing this?
Yes, we're completely replacing it.
So then, you said you're using copper where it can be seen, and that's where it can be seen, right?
Well, we were thinking mostly from the front facade of the street, not so much from the back, but yes, you're right, that can be seen.
Any questions? Yes?
Yeah, with regard to the front facade and the new fencing of the front facade, raising the fence somewhat on the windows, but you're also installing a gate in front of the door in addition to the security gate that's on the door in effect, right?
Right.
So would you just address why there's a need for both of those?
Really, it's a security thing in terms of the owner coming out of the house and not having people be able to be right in that little foyer. And that's essentially an empty space right here, so if you left the house and came outside, you'd still have one layer of security that you could go through before you would be in the public domain. It's really to try and capture that space as part of the private space.
And that's letting the light, light those...
Those would be the lights, yeah, with these lights up here. So there'd be a light in the center of each arch.
Do you have examples of precedence for these grills, this kind of security gate, in the neighborhood, or...
Yes, we, I'm sorry that this is, there's too much natural iron here, but this is, this is an iron gate. Every one of these photographs, except for this one, is a wooden door. These were showing a precedence for a half-light with a grill.
No, but I mean in the kind of the arched opening, I mean, this, what you're talking about is a gate in front of a door, I mean, kind of a gate in the areaway.
This one has, this one has a gate in the arch right there, and these two also have gates in the arch.
They go up or...
They go, well, they actually fill the whole thing, and we're not proposing that.
Okay. Go to testimony. We'll be back to you in a moment. Thank you very much, Barbara Z.
Barbara Z., Historic District Council. HDC finds the proposed changes to the rear and the rooftop to be appropriate, but questions aspects of the entrance and areaway. The proposed height of the new iron fence at the loggia seems unnecessarily high, 52 inches. When viewed at street level, the iron bars run into the metal window grills above, producing the effect of a continuous security gate from floor to ceiling. HDC applauds the removal of the glass storm door, but wonders why it is necessary to replace the existing wood door behind it. In the rooftop rendering, there appears to be a significant amount of copper being removed from the uppermost level of the mansard roof. However, this does not appear in the other renderings of the facade. If the rooftop rendering is correct, HDC asks that more of the copper plating be retained. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Michael, Michael Hall, Friends.
Michael Hall, Friends of the Upper East Side. The Preservation Committee at Friends understands the desire for alterations to 19 East 70th Street in order to improve safety and meet code regulations. However, some of the proposed changes go further than necessary. The ironworks across the front loggia serves as a barrier between the sidewalk and the exterior facing stairs. The current proposal is to raise the height of the railing to five feet, well above what is required for code compliance. It is feeling of Friends Preservation Committee that excessive ironwork is close to building off to the street, recommend raising the height to be code compliant but no further. For the same reason, we feel it is unnecessary to continue the ironwork across the doorway. The decorative work over the fan light is agreeable, given that the fan light design includes the house number, this would also make the plaque next to the door redundant and unnecessary. On the upper story, found that the conversion of the flanking windows on the front balcony to French doors is appropriate. By extending the current window openings down, the visual impact is mitigated by the railing and distance from the street. Similarly, we found that the changes to the mechanical bulkhead are appropriate. In regards to the rear facade, we applaud the applicant for specifying divided lights on the rear window, however, there is simply too much glazing. The rear facade is far too visible from Madison Avenue, and the proposed solution is not appropriate for a secondary facade. The explanation of the design that the glazing is required for light and air, code compliance is not enough of a rationale, as only four guest bedrooms are located on the rear of the building. These bedrooms are on the upper floors and could be accommodated elsewhere in the plan if necessary. The Preservation Committee at Friends urges the commission to work with the applicant to come up with a solution that fits more appropriately into the historic surroundings. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Community Board Eight recommends, full board recommends approval of the application as presented. Want to respond to anything that's been said in the testimony? If you wish, go right back up where you were.
I think that the issue of the gate at the front seems to be a contentious issue, and I'm not sure when the minimum code requirement for safety of, let's say, people falling over that stair becomes the sort of jurisdictional decision-making factor for what might work aesthetically or not. I think the proportions of these arches are fairly monumental, and an 18-inch increase in height of something that would significantly improve the privacy and security of this house seems like a reasonable thing to ask, and so we would, we would still like to see this be approved, but we're open to discussion on it.
Let's start that discussion. Fred, thank you.
I think this is an extraordinary proposal. I think the change in the rear facade, which is quite visible from Madison Avenue, is really excellent and well-done. Let's just get the flashing right, Paul, or you're gonna have lots of leaks and all those setbacks, but it, I think it looks, I think it looks terrific. The top may be slightly more visible, but it's visible before, I think it's okay, and not visible straight across the street, that's fine. So the controversy seems to be boiling around whether these gates right in the front can be there, or can they be 18 inches higher than... To me, the facade is so strong, and the elements of the arches and the columns and all is so unusual, and such a strong statement, that, and it's an unusual situation to have a private, open space like that. I mean, I think our city is maybe a little more dangerous today than it was, and places like that are problems, I think. And in any event, and I think the number of examples you've given us of very nearby grills in the fan lights and everything, there are many of them, so, you know, I don't think I find a problem with approving all of this.
Okay, Michael Deminger, excuse me, Fred.
I also, I agree with Fred about the issue with the gates. I think it actually, by raising it, it actually makes the proportion work better within those arches. The only, the only thing that I would strongly suggest is that where sheet metal, standing seam sheet metal is being replaced, and it's visible, it needs to be replaced with copper.
Good over that. Definitely, on an individual landmark, the metalwork should be copper, and especially when we have every indication that it probably was. I agree that the proportions of the new fence look good. My concern with it is the streetscape effect, that if the building was designed to have a more engaged quality with the passerby, with the pedestrian, I think that that extra foot and a half does make a difference, and I'd urge them to explore ways to reduce it, kept it more at a pedestrian scale, where you could feel like you could visually participate with the, with the loggia. I think that the gate across the entry bay would be appropriate to me, but I'd prefer to see it lower. It maybe doesn't have to be as low as it is, and maybe it could be a little bit higher, but, you know, maybe put the newer...
Or something with a little better...
Yeah. So I agree with, first of all, the general comment that where there's metal that's visible, it needs to be copper, but I'm looking at the stepping of the rear yard. I mean, this is a lot of work to be, being done on an individual landmark that's been sort of debauched over a lot of years, probably well before designation, but, but the amount of stepping actually reminds me of those canyons that are in the Garment District, where you look out the rear yard off the balcony, off the fire escapes, and you see all of the buildings stepping in like that at their rear, and I'm thinking, well, but that's typical of Garment District. It isn't typical of the Upper East Side Historic District. So one reaction I'm having is that there are actually too many steps, and that seems to have been very intentionally done because there's, the project is being cut back from its original line. So I think that that's kind of an atypical move there, and sort of draws attention to, I don't know, sort of too many levels of changes in the building, so I think that should be toned down. With respect to the fence, I don't really have an objection to the height, I actually think it even could handle higher, mostly because when you do see these fences in this area, they do tend to be higher, but the difference is, they're very decorative, and what these elevations are showing to me is more fortress than decoration. So, and the first is that the security grills on the windows look like security grills as opposed to decoration, which, and so therefore, this fence looks like a security fence as opposed to decoration. If there was more care taken to that, for that design, you'd have some kind of an integrated security element, and I can't really imagine why you need security grills on the windows if you also have a security grill on the exterior, you kind of, you're secure. So I think that just wasn't given enough design attention, but otherwise, fine with the project.
Okay. Diana?
I was kind of troubled by the, I was kind of troubled by the addition of the gate in front of the door with the security on the door... in front of the door with the, a security on the door as well and the, I think I agree with Marjorie's comments about the, the problem is that there's, that the, it, it's speaking security, it's, it, it's being installed for that reason, I understand that, but if it could be somewhat more decorative in quality, perhaps it would then have less of a, you know, less of that feeling. I didn't actually mind the, the raising of the guardrails because I thought that the proportions were, you know, fine within the large, the large portico there. And I, I think that the back is fine. I think the design is, is good and improvement and is okay from Madison Avenue and I don't have any problem with that. Or the changes to the rooftop, really the only thing that was bothering me is, is the appearance of the, that fence in the front.
The fence in the front?
Yeah.
Okay. Roberta?
Kind of waiting to hear everybody comes out here.
Okay, so I'm also a little troubled by that because I challenge person, person five feet. The fence seems like a barrier, a, an unintended kind of barrier to everyone, but I guess they, they want it as a barrier to some, but it's, it's, I think it's too much and I would rather see it reduced or kept at that height. But it is now, that's not to say that I'm saying that you can't have the gate, you could have the gate, but I think it just needs to all be lowered and decorative would be a much better choice to go than until the retirement in this particular case, I think. And on the rear, I mean, I'm curious about the stepping back too, but I think I could, I could work with the step back.
Okay. So you're going to work on the decorative gate? Is that what you're saying?
I think you have six.
We have six for?
The roof re, re, and the, the gate height be, and design be set.
Okay. Let's, let's, I think we do have six for that, yes. And then restudy with staff? Come back for the gate or not? I'm sorry? No, I'm comfortable with the staff looking, okay.
Study with the intent for me and with the lowering.
With a lowering, a lowering and a decorative and then approve the rear, everything else is approved. Michael Goldblum, please. Hearing is closed.
Yes, regards, 19 East 70th Street in the Upper East Side Historic District, an individual landmark. The application is to reconstruct the rear facade, construct a rooftop addition, replace the area way fencing and alter the entrance. I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the rear and roof of the building have been highly altered without being part of a unified redesign and that the remaining sheet metal bay is simply designed and awkwardly related to the facade. Therefore, the proposed modifications to these portions of the building will not eliminate any significant architectural features. That the proposed alterations to the rear and roof will utilize materials and finishes which will be compatible with the historic materials and finishes of the building, helping to support the unity of the overall design. That the proposed stepped massing of the rear facade and the increase in windows are necessitated by the light and air requirements for returning the building to residential use and will be in keeping with the varied massing and window sizes at the rears of neighboring buildings within a block. That the stepped form and large windows at the rear of the building will recall historic aspects of building, of the building's design, which included a shallow rear extension for the dining room with a ban of large multi-light windows and a curved skylight. That the redesign of the rear facade will be unified in composition and feature materials, details and masonry opening sizes commensurate with the, with such aspects of the historic rear facades of high style residences of this age and style. That the reconfiguration of the existing modern penthouse bulkheads and other rooftop accretions will simplify the silhouette of these elements, reducing their visibility from the most prominent views of the building. That the design and profile of the proposed rear from rooftop alterations when seen from public thoroughfares will, within the context of the neighboring modern and altered secondary facades, will be compatible with the surrounding context and will not draw undue attention to these portions of the building. That the replacement of the existing modern storm doors, transoms, light fixtures and fencing will not eliminate any historic fabric or significant architectural features and that the dimensions, materials, designs and finishes and details of the proposed transom grill and the light fixture will be in keeping with such aspects of installations of these types at residences of this age and style. That regarding the front area way fencing, the fencing will be lowered in height and redesigned to better recall historic fencing, that the grill will be installed within the existing wood transom instead of a front door and transom and that the two sets of gates will be included but will be matching the redesigned fence. Additionally, all metal used at the rooftop restorations or new areas and at the rear, including at the rear facade will be of copper.
Second, all in favor? I oppose. That's approved. Talk to the staff right now about any, any clarification. Thank you. Thank you.